Call to order, the Monday, November 4th, 2019, Charter Township Oxford zoning board appeals meeting. Anyone please stand, pay respect to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to note the role. Moving on to approval of the agenda as published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to approval of our minutes from the August 12th ZBA meeting. Any changes? None?
I move that we approves the regular minutes dated August 12th, 2019.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Moving on to item number six, which is public comment for items not on the seating's agenda. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on something not on the seating's agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that part of it and move on to item seven A, which is part of our regular business. This is ZBA 007.19, 525 North Lapeer Road, parcel 0422, 151018. The applicant is Rosetta Building Company, parentheses Culvers. Owner of the property is Anthony Kalina Trust. Address is, it's incorrect, but 483884, Forbes Street, Chesterfield, Michigan, 48084. Subject property is located in a C1 commercial, in a C1 general commercial district with a special land use for a drive-through, a drive-in, single restaurant. The applicant is requesting a variance in the following sign approval. One, proposed menu board being too large. Total area, menu board per section 9.5J. Two, a freestanding sign being too tall, the freestanding sign height pursuant to section 9.8D. And three, too many wall signs proposed, number of signs, building signs per section 9.8J. Does the applicant hear?
Mr. Chair, I need to excuse myself from this. I discussed this in the planning commission.
So we have our motion to excuse?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. I move to excuse Mr. Noel for this portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so we'll get to the applicant now. Do you please come forward, introduce yourself.
My name is Andrew Zelke, 4564, Oak Ridge Ridge Road, Clarkson, Michigan, 48348. I, the applicant, Andrew Zelke, is requesting three variances for new Culvers Restaurant located at 525 North Lapeer Road, the parcel number 0422151-018. This parcel is located on the south side of existing Tractor Supply Company, whose address is 575 North Lapeer Road. Culvers is requesting a height variance for freestanding sign, two additional wall signs, and increased size of the proposed menu board. Which one we're going to start with first? The menu board, or, I mean, I've just gone by what your...
Yeah, go, wherever you want to go, it's fine.
Okay. It says number one here, it says proposed menu board, is that what you, okay.
If you want to do that, that's fine.
All right, that's fine. So, the applicant's, myself, is requesting a drive-through menu board, approximately about 73 inches above the finished grade, six feet, and about 106 feet in length. The current design, Culvers standard, is a much larger menu board due to the very size of our menu offerings. And placing a smaller menu board is just going to cause a lot more traffic congestion just because of the mere fact there's not a lot of people that recognize all the different types of food offerings we have. So the clearer the menu board, the faster traffic flows and we get the people out and get the product to them, and off they go. A lot of this, you know, the larger menu boards is created primarily from the government having us to label the calorie counts on the menu board itself. And this caused us to increase our menu board substantially to put the individual calorie counts on the individual items that need to be ordered. And in order to install a smaller board, the visibility, the graphics would be harder to see and less clearly and legible. And obviously, this would make it a longer time, a more congestion for traffic situations in the drive-through. And a lesser variance request would not give substantial leave to the applicant, nor be more consistent to the justice of the other property owners. And I think McDonald's had also had to increase their size of their menu board also. So, that's pretty much it in regards to the menu board itself.
Can you go over the length and width again? It looks like we have a discrepancy on the...
Seventy-three inches by 106 inches in length. Let me just double...
Hundred, okay.
Is that what I said? Or is...
I thought you said six feet in length was 100...
Oh, no, no, six feet above finished grade, roughly six feet, 73 inches above finished grade.
And that's the top of the sign, right?
Yeah, roughly, yeah. It, you know, can vary a couple inches here and there, but, you know, roughly 73 inches above finished grade.
Any other questions on that? Please, continue.
Okay. I guess we'll go to the next item number two, which is freestanding sign.
Item two is the freestanding sign, yes.
Yeah, so we're proposing to put in a freestanding sign that's approximately 13 feet in height with an EMC below it, which measures about 15.5 square feet each side. The sign itself would be oval sign, that's measured roughly 32 square feet per side. And the requested variances for the height is due to the signage location that TSC has mounted right before the shared access drive. So customers coming from the north, if we had a six-foot regular sign, you know, we'd be blocked by the traffic supplier, the Tractor Supply Company sign coming southbound. And if the consumer does not be able to see our sign or EMC sign that says like the flavor of the day, there's no way for them to turn around, you know, once they get past that driveway. You know, MDOT required a shared access drive on that location, and, you know, they're not going to allow us another driveway to the south. So, once people get past our location, they have no way besides to go downtown, you know, find a driveway to turn around in and then come back to the north, and then loop back around to the north, to the south again to come back to us.
Do you have any site studies for that, with that?
Not specifically, no.
Okay, because if you were, from what I can just merely look at, it starts its curvature because it goes from a boulevard section down to a two or four lane section going south of there. And the road does curve a bit, and just plotting out where the Tractor Supply, nice on the plan, have the Tractor Supply sign, and just kind of looking at the angle, it looks like you do have a fairly decent, I agree it's somewhat, might be in the way, but I, I just...
There's not that much of a radius for me to be, you know, six foot radius to come across that to get the visibility.
If you run the line back from the signs, I mean, you can see that fairly well. It's not like it's right up against the road. If these were right up against the road, and then, you know, you do have the building, the building's not a sign, it still acts like a sign, you can see it. I mean, Tractor Supply was as far enough back from there. Okay, I just wondered if you had any studies.
No, I mean, not a visibility study, whatever, but just me driving and looking and trying to see the visibility of a sign, you know, with the Tractor Supply, them being right there. I mean, if they were to move their sign back, you know, a little bit, or, you know, 100 feet back, you know, towards the north, you know, that'd make a substantial amount of difference, you know, but they're right at, they're right at that driveway, you know. So when you first come up to that driveway, you know, the first sign you see is their sign. And then, you know, since we've got a shared access drive, it's very difficult, you know, to see our sign and concentrate our sign to see that before you even pass our, pass the driveway. So, I mean, if I had another, you know, access point, a left in, right in, right out, you know, coming out, the very end of our property, if MDOT will allow us to do that, then I could capture those people that drive past our location, you know, trying to, you know, find our sign. So that's the, you know, that's the biggest thing.
Do you have any discussions with Tractor Supply about...
Yeah, I did, I went and talked to the manager at the end of September, actually 9:30, and talked to her. And she said she can get back to me. I talked to her twice and she never got back. That's, I mean, she was on the phone with her, on the cellphone with her man, the, I don't know, the district manager or whatever. And he's like, you know, I go, here's my email address, gave her a card, he's like, just email me, let me know if we can move it or do something, you know, just, you know, a little ways back. But they never, you know, did anything, so...
Because I look at the, you know, the signs down, up and down the street, and when I go to is the Oxford Bank and the Flagstar Bank.
Yeah, they're all...
I know there's a little bit of a distance between those two. I mean, just roughly taking this drawing, scaling in, the one for Tractor Supply, there's like 70 feet of difference. Looking at Google Maps, there's probably 90 feet between Flagstar and, just for a frame of reference, and Oxford Bank. I don't know if there's that much of an issue with that one.
No, but you've got, even going north, all of the signs, because I drove up and down there today, and it's, every one of the signs are at six feet. And like the tattoo shop and the tanning shop, they're right next to each other, you still see those. Myers is only at six feet.
And McDonald's is at six feet. Any questions related to this issue? Okay.
Okay, so, wall signs. So we're looking at a variance on the wall signs. We're looking for two additional wall signs, one on the north and south side of the building. And those would be a channel lit scripted sign mounted to the building. And the total area, the combined signs would be less than what the ordinance requirements are, you know, as far as total square footage of size, but it's the number of what we're looking at. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
It makes sense.
What's that?
It makes sense, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, so we're looking for one on the north side, and we're looking one for on the south side for the driveways, drive-through side. And that too, you know, we're just looking to get some relief as far as our branding and all that, and what Culvers requires as far as signage goes. And that's pretty much a driving factor, is they, you know, want the signage on, you know, the three sides of the building.
And our ordinance allows for one.
What's that?
And our ordinance allows for one.
Right, exactly, you know...
So one above the drive-through, one above the, on the south side, and then one above the north entrance?
Yeah, yeah, so...
And then one above the east side of the building, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, the east side's kind of the main front side, right.
That makes sense.
Right. So, and we're looking to, you know, have those, you know, three signs granted to us as far as, you know, traffic can see us, obviously, and increasing awareness and brand awareness of the Culvers Restaurant.
Questions?
Are those going to be lit, or...
Yeah, they're lit, channel scripted signs.
So the ordinance says one, one wall sign per side, right?
Uh, I think one wall sign per building.
One per building, yes.
Right, not per side, yeah.
One per owner.
Right. And if you go up and down, you'll see Tim Horton's got, you know, two or three signs on there, and McDonald's has got a couple, and same with Rio's, and Tropical Smoothie and all that, so...
And Tropical Smoothie is too, right?
Yeah.
The front and the side.
Yep.
Tim Horton's is a front and a side.
Right.
Yeah, unless you're on a corner, you get one for the inside, right?
Yeah, and there's, pseudoly is, are on a corner, but it's not a street. So, any other questions? No. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
At this time, it's 7:15. I would like to open up the public hearing for anyone from the public who should come forward, and please give your name and address, don't all rush at once.
Good evening. Mary Ann Cains, I'm a resident of Stony Lake Village condos, part of the Waterstone community. And I just have a few concerns or comments I'd like to make about the signage. It has no reflection on Culvers as a business, this would refer to any business that was going to put a drive-through at that location. We in the Stony Lake Village condos, on a nice quiet evening, can hear the takeout orders from McDonald's because we have many lakes in our Waterstone community, and they're conduits of sound. So I just wanted to make the comment because the average person may not realize that some of those drive-through orders, you know, the voices would carry to such an extent to reach some of the residential areas bordering these businesses. In the recent timeframe, you know, we have worked with McDonald's, when they have their drive-through, their new signs, as far as the size of their signs, the content of their signs, but mainly, they agreed to have no animation and no sound, which was a concern of us directly because of the noise that's generated at morning, noon, and night rush times, you know, at a popular fast food restaurant like McDonald's. So, we were pleased that they were willing to work with the community and with the talentship in trying to restrict what they were having available as far as the drive-through, because the drive-through is on the west side, where our residential communities border up to these businesses, would be on the northwest side for us. So when I look at the waivers that Culvers is asking for, I'm a little bit concerned because previously at the planning commission, it was a waiver for landscaping, not having landscaping on the west side of the building was approved by the planning commission, which personally, obviously, I would have hoped that they wouldn't have done. So now we don't have a double screening. They felt that the residential's homes that were there provided their own landscaping, that was adequate enough. But now that we hear about illuminated Culvers signs, we hear about, you know, the drive-through where that's going to be positioned, that, to me, is a concern as to how those residents, I believe in the Lake Ridge community, are going to see the illumination in the evening, and they're going to hear, like we do, that, you know, the carryout orders from the drive-through itself. It was kind of alluded to, the fact that possibly, you know, because they have a shared access drive, and there's probably going to be further development beyond the Tractor Supply and with Culvers, that maybe they would look at a joint sign, some kind of one unified sign that would list all those buildings, that would, you know, share that access drive so that we wouldn't have multiple signs, and we would just have one that would indicate all those folks, that would, businesses that would be located there. That might be helpful or something to think about versus a 13-foot sign and this type of sign. I just worry because I see on Lapeer Road where we have our White House Business District, they have so many signs there. To me, it's, when I drive by, it's actually overwhelming. I don't think the human brain can comprehend all this being said on those numerous signs. And I would hate for this section, which is just starting to begin development, that it would come into that same purview where we would have just overwhelming amount of signage. And we've had, you know, issues with signage on other businesses in this area, and so we've been, worked very hard to try and keep it restricted and adhering to our zoning ordinances that are in place right now. But again, I just, my real concern is with the drive-through area and how it might impact with sound and with illumination, especially in the evening hours, to the residents in the Waterstone community. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and wish everyone a happy holiday season.
You too. Thank you very much. Got a couple of questions. If you, yes, I do. When you were talking about the menu board, you talked that the sign obviously has grown larger because of offerings, and the issue related to government regulations on depicting the color content. How, how much of a differential between your old sign was and what this sign is?
I don't know the exact, you know...
10%, 20%?
Probably more than that, because we had to put each individual color content for all of our, you know, product offerings on there. So, you know, in each, you know, I don't know exactly what it roughly...
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Just making a statement, I was wondering...
And I know, you know, a lady also mentioned that, you know, that she hears the speaker signs. Ours faces the west, so it kind of faces Oxford State Bank, the property.
Yeah, that was one of my questions about where it's, it's by the menu sign where you're ordering, is correct, so it's on the south side at the southwest corner?
Right, yeah, exactly. But it, the actual speaker post faces the Oxford State Bank, there's a, you know...
Faces south.
What's that?
Faces south, then, right?
Correct, yes. Yep, so you're looking north or...
The guy was, it faces kind of south or western.
Right.
I know one faces west, the other one's kind of turned. Hours of operation for Culvers?
Uh, 10:30 till 10 o'clock.
10:30 to 10.
So I know the McDonald's is open much later than we are, things are open until midnight, so I can understand, you know, that aspect of it.
What's the plan for the property in the back? What's the future plan?
We don't know roughly right offhand, we're just trying to look for some type of low-impact type of use back there. You know, something that's not going to drive a whole lot of traffic back there, you know, something versus, you know, limited amount of traffic, if it ever gets developed, you know what I mean? I have no intentions of developing it the next few years, I just, you know, I don't, my schedule is next couple of years, and it's not anything near what that is going to be driving to.
Nobody has a crystal ball.
Right.
Just, if that would develop, what would you anticipate for signage? Would you, would there be a need to come in for a second sign? For the business?
Right, for the business? Yeah, I don't know if it's something that we'd probably, you know, I don't know what it would be, you know what I mean? So, if we even want signage or what. So like I said, I don't really ha, don't really know right offhand, you know...
Because it's one single piece of property right now.
Right.
I mean, we're going to get into a kind of a situation that we had down the street at Gateway, with the Goddard School, and Oxford Bank, and Flagstar sharing signs.
Right.
I don't think we would be terribly interested in that. I mean, legally, they have a right for one sign. If it's a split property sign of some way, you could have it in the future, but I don't know if it ever need the requirements to be a legal parcel. Of course, it would be condominiumized, that could happen. But, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, we had a double drive-through at McDonald's as well, and I don't know if that's what you were alluding to or not, if there was any future plans for that.
For a double drive-through?
Yeah.
Not, you know, not the way my site design is, no.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't, I know Culvers, I think at times have looked at a double drive-through, but it's just, we can only produce food so fast, everything's made fresh. So for us, it's, you know, to do a double drive-through, it, you know, doesn't make sense, you know, logistically for each car to order, and then, you know, have to wait just as much time anyways, by the time they order and pull them up to the front and, you know, them waiting for their food to be cooked.
Yeah, there's a statistic about the amount of sales that go through McDonald's versus Culvers, I've done a couple Culvers in my professional career, so...
Right.
It's pretty, it's very dramatically different.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole process, you know, just from the restaurant end, it's totally different. I know McDonald's is trying to do a little bit where they're trying to make, you know, more fresher things and cook, you know, to order, but I don't know how it's working for them, if it's, you know, because it's pretty logistical, big change for them.
Is this a pretty standard sign, or are all these made custom? I mean, is this different than the sign that's down at the one in Lake Orion?
It probably is, because the Lake Orion's, they've been open for like 10 years or 15 years, and a long time, I mean, long time for building standard-wise, you know, as far, I know they're up for a reimage, but it seems that Culvers changes their reimaging every 10 years, and different things have come up to the market and different ways of doing things. So signage does change, and I'm going to imagine that our sign is definitely different than what their sign is. Because I just don't know what it is right offhand.
But I mean, is this a standard, Culvers produces a sign and says, here's what you need to have, or is this something that you're asking for this?
No, Culvers likes to see this sign, it's, you know, when I, when I see it, I think they, they got a label for it, or a number for it.
Yeah, it's a package, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
M something or another, yeah, exactly, right, yep. So it's a, you know, it's one of their standards, signs that they use, and they've got a number for it, so it's not something that, you know, that's, you know, special that I'm creating...
Not unique to this location.
Right, exactly.
So you know our, you know, area square footage is what, 24 square feet?
Yes.
Not to exceed, we're... Is this a 45, what's the total square foot that you're asking for on the menu board? Is it 45?
Uh, no, it's probably, let me look real quick.
More than that, 53? Because I had in the Kyle Workman...
Usually, usually it has...
She's saying, but when I did the math, I figured my math, it's like 53.7, yeah.
Yeah, 53.7 is what I got.
Yeah, okay. So you're going for...
Usually, it says on here what the square footage of it is.
Yeah, just doing the math, it's 53.7, not 45.
It grew from Kyle Workman to this plan, right? So I, you know, in terms of the lesser variances, are something that you would consider?
I, you know, I don't, it's pretty much a brand standard sign, you know what I mean? So, I don't know...
62, 53 at the top, there's the base here. So multiply by 6, that's it.
Yeah, five foot by, five foot by 100...
60...
Oh, yeah, so nine, nine times five is 40, 45, 45 square feet roughly?
45.
45.
That's where 45 came from.
Yeah, so five times nine, basically.
Yep. All right. Um, are you, you have an existing Culvers franchise?
Yes, yep.
Which one is that?
Uh, one in Livonia, one in Rochester Hills.
So the one down in Livonia by...
DRC or 96 in Middleburg.
Right next to the Outback Steakhouse?
Mm-hmm.
And one in Rochester by...
Myers.
Stone Place, right?
The what? Yeah, right next to Stone Shop.
Meyer Park, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions?
So on the height of the, do you want to go to the height of the sign, the freestanding sign, you're looking for a variance from six feet height max to 13 feet height, right?
Right, because, you know, Culvers has an EMC sign that shows their flavor of the day, and that's pretty much since Culvers opened back in 1984, they've promoted the flavor of the day.
Yeah.
And that's pretty, pretty important to their brand standard, is to have that flavor of day shown on there, whether it's turtle or whatever, you know, flavor of the custard is for the day.
Is that a, like a, like a template, I guess, or, you know, just a mainstay for Culvers businesses? I'm seeing other Culvers that don't have a 13-foot sign in front of their restaurant.
It, yeah, I don't know, it could be older Culvers, I have no idea, you know what I mean, all depends on what, it probably more depends, you know, on the city ordinance too, you know what I mean? So I don't know. I mean, mine's not based on our ordinance, it's based on, you can't really see our sign when you come to the intersection, and you've got a divided highway, and you can't, there's, you know, once you get past that, you know, driveway, you don't have anywhere to, there's no more loop around turns, you know, Michigan lefts to go anywhere.
Sure.
You know?
For now, right, yeah.
Even, 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 even later, you know what I mean, even when MDOT redoes the road, you know, we're right at the end of that point, you know, of the boulevard right there.
And this was the best situation that you could think of, you know, in terms of meeting our, our ordinance requirements and...
Well, I mean, I asked TSC just to pop their sign 100 feet back, you know what I mean, so I did go talk to them and meet with them.
Right, right.
You know, but, you know, other than that, it, you know, I don't know how to get above their sign or make mine more visible.
Okay.
You know, that's basically what it comes down to.
Comments, questions? No, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. So moving on to our findings of fact. In granting any variance, the ZBA prescribed appropriate conditions or safeguards conform to this ordinance, either nonconforming land uses or structures or buildings in the same district or in other districts. In order for the ZBA to grant variances, zoning board appeals must determine that law enforcement of these, of the provisions of this ordinance would result in practical difficulties. So, number one, pursuant to section 17.8C, with no single factor being determined. Sure compliance with restrictions governing area, setback, frontage, height, bulk, densing, and other non-use manners will reasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose or render ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome. I guess we'll do all three at the same time. So if we want to reference the menu part of it, or the wall signs around the, so I guess with our comments as first start, in order, let's go to the menu board.
I think it applies, you're looking at a menu board that, you know, the applicant makes a good point, right, it may create longer congested traffic situations for the drive-through lane.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's, that's definitely applies in this case, related to the sign. We're not speaking, he's not live. Okay. I, I think that, that's, that's definitely applies in this case. Um, related to the, um, sign. We're not speaking, he's not live. Regarding the sign, the, uh, freestanding sign.
Not, I think it would apply, I, I'm trying to get my arms around the visibility of it in the, with the T tractor supply.
Yeah.
Um, and curvature of the road. Now, I don't know what changes are going to occur at M 24 either, right?
No.
13-foot sign's pretty tall, according to what it says.
Yeah.
Over twice, I think, right?
Yes. Maybe it won't. I mean, the grant of variance won't allow him to put up a sign. It's not allowing him that to do that.
Mm-hmm.
In my mind. Um, I mean, look at all the other businesses that belong there. You know, they, they've spent a lot of time working on the signs.
Right.
Um, I'm not convinced that it's necessarily blocking. I, I would like to see a sightline to do that. I understand it, but I don't necessarily see it. Um, if I was granted or given some sightline study, I might be able to see it better. But I did drive it a couple of times over the weekend, drove this morning, drove yesterday just to kind of get an idea. And I'm, I'm not convinced that it's necessarily going to be blocked. The building will be there, you'll see the building. Signage is important, I get it. Everybody wants the sign, everyone wants the biggest, everybody wants the brightest everybody wants.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
We have tons of applicants on that road too that wants, they want a bigger, higher sign.
Right, and I, I think, you know, the gentleman came in with the gas station the one time. You know, at the end of the day, I think it worked out okay for him.
Yeah, me too.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think it was.
He's still got enough.
I, I don't think so.
He's still got a variance on that, um, sign as well, but it wasn't.
No, it was what he was asking for, it was for the pole sign.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, going to the wall signs.
I don't think it really applies that it would make it unreasonable or prevent him from using it. Um, I do think it'll help with, you know, if, if the other sign is only at six feet and you can't see that, you'll still see the lit-up Culvers on the side of the building. On the side, you wouldn't necessarily see the front until you're right next to it, but you would still see it. So I think it is an added benefit. I wouldn't say it would un, unreasonably prevent him from using the property.
I, I agree. I mean, you have, he's wanting to put a sign on each side of the building. I'm not too sure what the benefit is on the west side of the building where you have no development, other than having illuminated sign on shining towards the water stone.
If you're going south or?
It's, it's on the. South side by the bank.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll, the people heading north will see it.
He's heading on here, here and here, as I have one back here.
This presentation showed one on the, on the west side, isn't it?
What did it?
No, so.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, it didn't, okay.
No, just three sides.
Yeah, I was looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, so front.
Yeah.
Rear.
So the north side, south side, east side. Yeah.
That's the rear, right?
Yeah, that one, your shows that.
And there's your drive-through elevation, so that's your south. Here's your north, main entry. So what is that?
Yeah, and the overall, all four sides it is.
Yeah, it does.
Individual elevations, it doesn't show. So that one, the rear or the west is out.
Okay, alright, so.
Correct.
Wait, I did see.
I just showed on three sides.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
You don't have one on the west, right?
Sign three, two, and.
Okay, okay, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. Knowing where that's positioned, typically the other signs that you will see, and I agree with you, if you were to lower that ground sign, obviously some visibility would be needed. Having the sign along the, the east side of the building wouldn't be beneficial. I know since the period gets to that transitional point between a non-divided to a divided highway, and I look at this in somewhat of the context of the, of the Lake Orion one, where they do have all three sides similar, similar to this. And it is beneficial. It is beneficial to see that from a distance because you are, you're not going to be in a two-lane or a three or a four-lane road. You're in a, you're being a divided highway. I think there's some benefit in that.
And McDonald's got the same.
Yeah.
Sides that when they.
But again, it stands in its own context.
Right, right, okay.
Alright, the, I guess the need for the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners.
To the applicant, yes, other property owners? No, I mean, the argument could be made, if we go higher here, you'd be blocking the, the bank sign right down the road. So, I mean, they could make that argument as well. So I, I think it does justice to the applicant. I don't think it has anything to do with other property owners.
Is it the menu board or you said, you got it in fact, you want order?
Yeah, menu board.
The menu board, I'm sorry. I was, no, the menu board I think is fine.
It does to the property owners and to the applicant as well, you think?
Yeah, I would say to, to the other property owners because, I mean, it is around the side. It's not like the one at McDonald's where it's shining back towards the houses, so I wouldn't say it's a benefit, other than it's not shining at their property.
Comments?
For the, no, the menu board, I mean, we're looking at, right, the square footage and the height of that. So I think it applies for that.
I agree. I think it applies in fact to the menu. Going to the, uh, freestanding sign. Of course, we'll do justice to the applicant.
Right, but I don't see that it does to other property owners.
Yeah, I don't see that either on the menu, on the out freestanding.
I agree.
Okay. Um, the wall signs?
Same thing, I think it does justice to the applicant. I don't see how it benefits property owners.
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay. Moving on, a lesser variance than requested will not give substantial release to the applicant and will not be more consistent with justice to other property owners to the menu board.
I think it applies for the menu board.
Yeah, I would agree.
Uh, freestanding sign?
I don't think it applies.
There's no lesser variance being requested.
Right.
Right. And only the property owners have a sign that fits essentially is consistent.
And it's not consistent, yeah.
So it's not consistent. Okay. Wall signs? Again, there's no lesser variance.
Yeah, there's no lesser.
Take one sign off and I think, I think there is a 3.
Yeah.
In that particular instance.
I think.
We do have, um, cases in, in the community where other signs have been granted for similar circumstances. So I think that, that does apply in that regard. Okay? Uh, the need for the variance due is due to unique circumstances of the property and not generally applicable in other areas or other properties in the same zoning district. Uh, the, the, uh, menu board signs in this regard. Well, it has applied in the same zoning district is not, I mean, it's for like McDonald's at the same particular instance. I know we had a conversation about Tim Hortons as well.
Right.
A while ago. And obviously the changing in, in government.
Yeah.
I mean, in May, it's going to force the sign to get bigger or just fix it to get smaller.
Yeah, and we're still at 24 square feet and has it been self-created?
Well, we're going to get to that. Um, moving on to the freestanding sign? Is there a queue or a need about that?
No.
And I think, you know, obviously the tractor supply sign, while it's close in proximity, I don't think it's, again, if that road was 10 to 15 feet off and you're traveling like this, I think you'd have that issue.
Yeah.
A sight study would have been nice to have. I, I'm still, I don't think it's that big of an issue. I mean, especially since that building, since there in the building will become a sign.
True.
In real life.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the wall signs? Again, I think because of the fact you're, I mean, it's mainly because of the divided highway, um, proximity and sightlines to that, to the building to, because if you just have the one front sign.
Mm-hmm.
You're not going to be able, that, that front sign's almost useless. It's nice to have.
Right.
Front of it, but it's really the general, generally be able to see from the south and from the north.
Yeah, I agree.
And lastly, the problem and result need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors. This is related to the, um, menu sign. Again, self-created, no. I mean, if, if we didn't have the government regulations related to the texting.
Right.
Sign be smaller, perhaps.
Right.
Perhaps. I would like to know how much it would have been, but I understand that. And where it's located, I don't think causes too much of an issue.
Yeah, I would agree.
Um, the knee, excuse me, related to the monument sign, or the ground of the freestanding sign, sorry. This problem resulting, it's not been self-created.
I don't think it applies, I think it has been self-created. We're looking at 13 feet height, six feet in our ordinance. And what's, what's the benefit of having a 13-foot sign out front? And I think when I pull into businesses, I'm looking for a sign to find out where the driveway is to pull in, right? I'm not going to be looking that high up in the air for it, but I think it's been self-created. And I think there may be a consideration for lesser variance on that.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I agree too. Um, I honestly think it, I don't think it has been self-created. I don't think, a 13-foot high sign is truly out of context in that area. I mean, really, everything in there has been six feet and I'm pretty religious about that. Tim Hortons has no sign.
Yeah.
I mean, they're on a hard corner, of course, but they have no sign whatsoever. Um, related to the, um, wall signs?
I think that applies, I don't think it's been self-created.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much the design of.
Keeping safety in mind and.
Okay.
Improved traffic law.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
Moving on with that, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to handle this as simple motions? Can we do it all as one? Yeah, do it all as one? Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion if there's any discussion. No?
Is there any consideration for that before we vote?
Oh, is there a motion? We can ask that one? Let's ask about the height? Do we have a discussion with them about that?
You can't, I honestly, I don't know. How you're going to.
Again, I think it's out of context. I think the whole amount of sign is out of context in that area.
Yeah.
I would not be in favor of it. I mean, it's, we, that signage ordinance was worked on for a long time and that's what we wanted.
Right.
And it's unfortunate that that tractor supply sign is there, but I don't think it's overwhelming an issue. I mean, you got that building, you see the building. The building, I think your comment about it becomes more of direction, you know?
Yeah.
So do we have any discussion with that or?
You can.
Here we are.
So, as we, we're, we're struggling with the height of the sign.
Right, um, I, I guess the, the biggest thing is maybe we can, you know, bring the height of the whole thing down where the bottom of the EMC is not at six feet. Maybe the, you know, the Culvers sign. You know, or top of the EMC is, is, you know, down further where, if someone doesn't see the EMC, it's not the end of the day, but, you know, they can still see the Culvers sign. You know what I'm saying? So that way it's, it's brought further down, it's not as high.
So essentially you'd have a cabinet for the bottom of the EMC?
Well, it just, the overall sound is shrink, you know, down, you know what I mean? Because right now, the bottom of the EMC is six foot off the ground. So that basically gets you your eye level above the tractor supply, but the EMC is just going to promote the flavor of the day, it's not really promoting the Culvers brand, you know what I mean? Where the Culvers brand will get up above the, you know, the tractor supply sign.
Um, you, you're familiar with the one in Lake Orion, right?
The Culvers, yeah.
One Mr. Zemron's?
Yeah.
Now, that has the EMC, but it's not your digital board, it's the lettering. And then it has the sign on top of it.
Okay. Is it one of these changes out, the individual letters?
No, this is electronic.
Okay, alright.
It's electronic.
Okay.
It's not this digital board.
Right.
I mean, that got squished where the Culvers sign is on top.
Right, okay.
Where, I mean, that bubble sits right on top. Like that's eliminated. That's a foot two.
Right.
So this thing would be 2.5 and 4, 4 and a half, about seven, seven feet. Plus the cabinet height of the foot, that'd be eight feet. I'm not here to design your sign for you.
I, no, no, it's fine. Right, right, I know you're talking online. Right, yep.
What would you consider for a lesser height on the variance?
Well, I, I, I think obviously it's at, you know, 13, over 13 feet now. So if you took down the EMC sign, you know, which is basically 28, I'm not sure if that's the outside of the cabinet, it's to say 30 inches, and then you get another foot above that, so you're, you know, you're at almost four feet right there. You'd come down, so.
When you say take out, you're, you're eliminating the EMC cabinet or lowering it?
Just lowering it, I'm sorry, yeah. Lowering the EMC down because like I said, it's not per se the Culvers brand, they, you know, they're going to want to see the oval and the Culvers sign. You know, whether someone sees a flavor of the day at the time, they, you know what I mean? It's not, it's kind of irrelevant. I think it's more of the, the branding that they're going to want to see. And, you know, being able to see that sign and not drive past the driveway.
Because actually, this is almost 14 feet. This is.
Yeah, it's 13, 10.
13, 10, yeah, 3, 8, yeah.
Yeah. What I'm saying is this part is, if that's 14, this is 6, that's 8. This part.
Yeah.
Take out the pole and you can squash that down. You're going to need a foot if they push the cabinet all the way down.
Right.
You're going to need a foot off the bottom, regardless of the EMC, can you pull this down?
Yeah, and. I, I think it's more that, you know, I'm just trying to give over the tractor supply at six foot, so whatever six foot and up would be just a Culvers logo, you know what I mean, is what I'm trying to reference. EMC is whatever height, whatever height it is, it is, you know what I mean? EMC is whatever height, whatever height it is, it is. You know what I mean?
So, your bubble's four and a half feet, right? So, you're saying six feet plus the four and a half, then? Is that four, four feet, five inches?
You're pretty much wanting that whole culver's bubble above the six foot level.
If, if we can, you know what I mean? So, or, you know, just slightly above it, slightly above it or something. Something, you know, with the EMC just, if it gets covered up and people don't see it, it is what it is.
Yeah, ten foot, five inches.
Because EMC is not going to make someone drive past the driveway or whatever. It's the logo itself for the culver sign that's going to make the difference.
So, that would be roughly four foot.
Yeah, driving three, three, five, three, six.
Now, the area of the signage is for reverence, regardless of height. This does meet our requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
This sign does meet our requirements, because it's fifty square feet and we're less than fifty.
It's just the height.
Fifty percent, EMC is less than fifty percent of the sign, the culver sign. So, we are in compliance, so, so, I think obviously it's not.
It's half thirty-two?
It's C two. You're in the C two district, so it's fifty square feet. So, we're talking from fourteen to ten. Is that what I'm hearing?
Pretty much.
What are your thoughts about that?
So, are we correct that you would consider going down to, down from the thirteen foot, ten inches, ten?
Ten foot even? Yeah, I would do that, yeah.
So, you go ten foot even?
Because like I said, you know, the EMC is not. What's going to make or break, it's going to be the culver sign and someone not driving past the driveway. And then have them trying to figure out how to get back.
Yeah, it's still, it, it's higher than every other sign down the road.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. I just, I'm just struggling with that.
Yeah.
I really am. I'd like to see it brought down.
To what? I mean realistically. Yeah, I know, obviously, yeah, right, yeah. Good night, I'll see you later.
I mean, even to go eight, you would see something as you're driving down, you would see something over the tractor supply.
Right.
It, which would draw your attention.
I mean, this is, if you're a car right here.
Yeah.
I'm a vehicle driver. Okay? You're not right here. This is the sign as proposed. Here's tractor supply.
Yeah, wh- when I drove through it earlier, I did not see where it would str- obstruct anything.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, if you're driving this way and the car was right next to it.
Yeah, you're.
You'd have a.
Sightline, man.
I think you have a more of a sightline.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, I came back, it was like three hundred and some odd feet.
Yeah.
If I hold that edge of that sign, you could still see it and you're going to see the culver.
Yeah, and we've seen that on other signs too, where we may have thought that there was a sightline, but it's clear as day as you're driving.
Yeah. Again, contextually, these are sixty, seventy feet. Blackstar Bank, Oxford Bank are ninety-five. There's not an issue there.
Well, that and, I mean, without, without getting any type of study done on it, most of the people are Oxford residents that know it's there, or Lapeer residents that are driving through, and after the first time through will know it's there. I mean, there isn't a sign out in front of Tropical Smoothie and look how busy they are without a sign. Trust me, people are going to know it's there.
Yeah, but Chocolate Smoothie is on the north side of the driveway, you know what I mean? So, when people see, they see the, chocolate, okay, here is the driveway. Once you see this, the Chocolate Smoothie, then they drive and then they look for the driveway. Where mine, they'll see the culvers and then from there, now where's the driveway at? You know what I mean? And then boom, they're, they're past it.
I can't see it.
I mean, I, I mean, let's, let's just do nine feet then or something, you know what I mean? And just kind of split the difference a little bit, you know, between the six and the.
Well, would you be in favor of coming back with a sightline, so we can all see it, understand it better?
Yeah, but I'm, I don't, it's, I mean, it's because it's going to be lines drawn on there. I'm not going to, you know, hire an engineer or whatever to.
Well, if you want to, if you want a sign that exceeds our ordinance, you will.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I, I, I don't think anybody here in this board is favorable.
Right.
Pretty diligent about the signs.
Right.
It's a big, it's a big item.
No, I, I get it. But like I said, I, I only have one driveway too. You, you know what I mean? That's on the, on the, before you get to the, to the building.
And I think we're willing to entertain a study and look at it, just to see what it looks like. Maybe it's a point where you have it staked, you have something put up out there, that we can look at it.
Right.
And visualize it and understand it. Because you're asking a lot. You're asking a lot of us to do this.
Right.
I mean, I'm personally, I'm not in favor of it. I don't think there, there is the issue. But I, I'm, I'm willing to be open-minded and look at it, because obviously you have a concern. It's your business, it's your money, and the last thing I want is somebody to have a problem.
Right.
You know, we all want to be fair to businesses in this town.
Right.
Absolutely, but thirteen feet is no way, ten feet, nope. I, I, that's me speaking.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
They have their own opinion.
Right.
But if you want to, if we're talking ten, we're talking eight or nine, we would need to see something to really get a good look at it. We want to make the right decisions.
Right.
Because what we do here, it's going to be hard for me or us as a board to say no to the next person.
Right.
So, we want to.
Well, yeah, and I, I've got, like.
Totally fair with you.
No, I understand, but I, like, like I said, my, my situation is unique in the standpoint that, you know, my driveway is before the business and I have no way to loop around, you know? I'm at the end of the, you know, of Lapeer Road. As far as the boulevard goes, you know what I mean? Without, you know?
Yeah, I would agree with that, but I also know, um, once you make the curve and go into town, every one of the white houses in there has a sign, and they only have like a residential driveway. And we've said no to all of them as well. I, I, I think you're going to open up a can of worms if, if you keep allowing or start allowing. And we've worked very hard to keep these signs at six feet.
So, if you'd like, we can table that matter, if you want to do a study and provide us some additional information. Or we can just adjudicate this as it is.
Right. Okay, I mean, I can try to do a study or, or like, you know, like I said, I could, you know, come down to eight feet or whatever, just to get above, a little bit above the six foot and go from there. You know, so, I mean, if I can do eight foot and then lea- at least they've got some more visibility than, you know, being totally blocked at six feet.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thoughts?
Um, I mean, how do you want to do, do you want to do three separate motions or do you want to do all as one?
We can do it all as one.
Yeah.
Didn't he want to come back?
What's that?
Did he want to come back?
No, he, he, he's willing to drop it to eight feet.
Oh, without coming back?
Yeah, without, yeah, without doing any studies to show it.
Okay.
Okay. That's correct, right? Yeah. Want to make sure?
The other thing too, on the little brick three, that it's only on three sides of the building?
That it's on three sides, on the south, the north, and the east, not on the west elevation. The materials show on one of the pages incorrect.
Well, and this motion says per side, which would allow four, so three, three signs.
North, south, and east.
And related to the free standing sign. And we've worked in this township very hard about the six feet. Six feet's about it. Again, I'm sympathetic and I understand, but I, I, I would like, I would need to see something to justify doing just that. I just don't think it exists in my mind. Again, I'm just one person. So, do we have a motion?
Well, you want to do this up as a yes or no, or?
Oh, make a motion.
Okay.
Good. Uh, motion regarding the ZBA zero zero seven dash one nine sign variance for the property address five two five North Lapeer Road Parcel zero four two two one five one zero one eight featuring a culture culvers restaurant that they drive through as follows. Per section nine point five point J to allow the proposed drive-through menu board sign to be approximately seventy-three inches above the finished grade and a hundred and six in length. Um, item two per section nine point eight point D to deny the free standing sign to be, um, just over thirteen feet at, as, or eight feet as, as proposed by the applicant. Sec, uh, point three, uh, section, per section nine point eight point J to allow wall signage per, per, uh, side of the building on the north, south, and west side of the building. Oh, I'm sorry, east, north, and south, one sign per side of that building. This is based on our public hearing and discussion within defining the facts.
Second half.
Any other discussion related to that? We don't have a secretary?
So, to vote in favor.
Would be to, would be to approve the wall signs, approve the menu board and deny the free standing sign.
Or is that allowing the AP?
No.
No.
It's denying.
Denying it.
Okay.
Which would be denied thirteen ten in height or the eight foot as proposed as a lesser variance.
Correct.
So, we deny.
Okay.
So, on absence of a secretary.
Oh. All righty. Um, Bailey?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
And, um.
Yes. So, the two, well, the wall sign has been approved. Menu board has been approved, but the ground sign has been denied. Yeah. Thank you. Moving on. Uh, calendar, seven B, calendar for two thousand, twenty twenty.
I'll even back up, James.
Do we have to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, we have to hear Jonathan.
Get the vote on the heavy stuff.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve Mr. Noel coming back to the meeting?
No, you don't have to do that, just set the meeting.
Alright, we're good there then.
Approve the, uh, zoning board of appeals proposed, uh, meeting schedule as presented. Right?
Yep.
Second.
Second and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, board member comments? Comments? Sheryl?
We had one other though.
Do you guys want to go to six thirty or want to keep it at seven? That was an option. It is set for seven. A lot of the boards are going to six thirty. But if you like seven, it's fine.
I know we talked about that before and I think we wanted to do seven unless there was any other.
I'm fine with seven.
I'm fine with seven.
Seven's good. Seven's fine.
Okay. Um, board member comments? Sheryl?
I have none.
Mr. Bailey?
Good.
Have a great Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving. See you guys.
Absolutely, you as well. Motion adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?